We're gonna call the, uh, Meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Paul, can you do the roll call, please?
Megan.
Here.
Brian. Brooks.
Here.
Rob. Alyssa. Michael. Barb.
Here. Okay, we've got a quorum. I would ask for a motion on the agenda, and we've had a request. We've had a request that when you make a motion, state your name. So I would say Fish, making the motion, so that the, um, person doing the minutes has a little easier time to figure out all these voices.
Steph has one item to add to the agenda. So July 4th is the first Thursday of July. It's a holiday, so I imagine you all probably don't wanna be here for that. So, kind of the question to discuss, when it's appropriate on the agenda, is do you wanna meet the 3rd, the 5th, some other day, cancel? Up to you.
Where do you want us to put it on the agenda? The discussion item?
Yeah, we can do a discussion item number 12 and shift everything down.
Or 11A?
Yeah, that works too.
Okay.
There's currently, as far as I know, nothing formally on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, so with that addition, do we have a motion?
Uh, Noam will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
As amended.
Toot second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve the agenda, all in favor? Opposed? Consent calendar. That just needs a motion.
Bassett, our motion?
Toot second.
We've got a motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes on 8 and 9?
Toot second.
Hey, you guys are really following the rules, I'm impressed, okay. Motion, a second, to approve the minutes from May 16th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now is the time for public comments. If you're on the agenda for something specific, you can wait until that time. But if you have another comment about something that you would like to address the commission, you're certainly welcome to. We'd ask you to come forward to the microphone and give us your name and address. Anybody got anything they wanna discuss with us? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to new business. We've got a home occupation permit application on page 10. You wanna give us the scoop, Patrick?
Sure. This is a home occupation. The applicant at 2413 East Hogan Lane is looking to convert the third stall of their garage into a hair, an in-home hair salon.
Is that person here tonight? Okay, come on up. Just... Just give us your name and your address, and then just tell us a little bit about what you wanna do.
There you go, yep. Hi, my name's Tana Anderson. I live at 2413 East Hogan Lane, Brandon, South Dakota. I'm looking at converting our third stall into a home salon suite for myself to work in too. Been doing hair 17 years. Kinda just time to get home closer to kids for sports and activities and all that activity and stuff, so... I'll be working kinda Tuesday through Friday, 8 to 5, between 5 and 6, and about 5 to 8 clients a day. Kinda just small, triangle more part-time on it too, so...
So you're currently at another location?
I'm in Sioux Falls on the west side, 57th and Marion's, so I drive every day. We have three young kids, so we like to, it's time to be a little closer, so...
It's like going to Mitchell. Um, what questions does the commission have for her?
In looking at your application, I see you marked that all the items you can comply with, including the maximum square footage. So the 200 square footer less is...
Yep. I do have a little, our home, if anybody wants to see it. I do have it mapped out on our blueprint, so... Do you wanna see it? Okay.
So you're, are you adding a third stall?
No, we already have it existing.
Okay.
Our garage is currently not finished right now, so...
So how do we, do, do we make any, um, reference to selling the hair products, Patrick?
So 151511G says, unless expressly permitted by a conditional use permit, the home occupation permit is a conditional use permit. No retail sales are permitted from the site other than incidental sales related to the services provided. So incidental is undefined. At, at what point does incidental go to part of the business? So if you want it to be clear, then you could put it as part of the permit.
Does anybody have any questions for her?
Along that line, would you anticipate, would you anticipate selling some products along with your services?
Yes, I'd probably sell the salon products that I provide, like the hairspray, texture spray, and that kinda stuff, shampoo, conditioner.
Would you anticipate anyone coming in just for that, or would you...
Not really, no.
Expectant to people that are in for hair salon services and...
Yeah, usually just my own clients that kinda use their regular stuff, so...
So, uh, one chair?
Yep.
Just you?
Yep, just one chair, just me.
And I see on your application that you have a couple parking places off the street where people can park?
Yep, we have three, a big driveway that has a three, and we'd probably mark it off, so there's two, um, parking spots and third if needed.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Uh, Brooks, Noam, I'd make a motion to approve the, um, condition, or, home, home occupation permit. Shonem in second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it. Thanks for doing all your homework, we appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay, page 17, we've got another conditional use.
So, these next two are kind of the same processes why, why they're here. The first one is City Hall, the, the next item is the golf course. So the first one is... There was, there was the lot with the house on it next to City Hall. The city purchased that a while back, demoed the house, and now it's a nice little bear spot over there. So the city replatted this all into one lot. Here's the plat. That was zoned R1. City is, the City Hall piece is institutional. This conditional use permit is to extend the institutional zone throughout the lot. Each lot should have one zoning. The problem with replat, it's two. So it's extending the institutional across the lot.
No, you're, you're talking about the yellow shaded area, right?
That was the piece purchased by the city. So now it has been replatted into one lot, but the one lot has two zones.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow. So, that piece was platted after the original was rezoned, though, right? Was it, is it, am I, am I right?
Correct. The City Hall piece minus the yellow piece was zoned, rezoned institutional.
Yep, and then, then...
And the other piece was not changed, so it's still R1.
Yep, but the, the lot was separate at the time it was rezoned, right? So, I guess, my concern is to rezone something just because you purchase it. If, on, on this particular situation, I don't know if the neighbors would have a problem or not, but I could see a situation where someone buys a piece of land that's next to something, and just because you purchased it, and it's adjacent to another piece of property that you own, you automatically get to rezone it with a conditional use permit. I think that's, I don't, I don't think that's quite what... What was I looking at here on, uh, definition yet? Where a district boundary line divides a lot that was in a single ownership at the time of passage of this ordinance. So they weren't, they weren't in a single ownership at the time that it was rezoned. So I don't think it, I don't think we can really default to that. I think it's a little bit... Much to rezone something with a conditional use permit, I guess, so that's my concern. Am I looking at that right?
Well, I think we're just trying to get all of the city property under the institutional zone, 'cause that's what we're trying to do.
I, I understand that. I just think that doing that with a conditional use permit instead of a rezone... I think if we're gonna rezone it, we should rezone it, not try to do that with a conditional use. 'Cause it's different, you're giving out a, a different notification to the public.
Is there a reason why we went with conditional use? Is it just easier? I don't know.
Probably. That language has existed that way for a long time. But, so...
Is there any notice to the public for a conditional use? Do we give out mail?
Yeah, there's a sign, I saw the sign.
And I, I sent out the 300 feet.
I couldn't remember if the conditional use had the same mailing...
Well, I think we just instituted that, didn't we, the conditional use mailing?
The ma, the mailings, yes, but the sign was always a requirement.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that one, or what's your preference on it?
Toot's motion to deny.
Do I hear a second, or if there's no second, it dies? I don't hear a second, do I hear an alternative motion? And you're, you're really, you just want it done a different way? It's really what, you don't, you don't care otherwise?
Yeah, I, I don't think that this piece of property is probably gonna cause an issue, but I think that saying that you can buy a piece of property, and just because you're adjacent to it, you can rezone into it with a conditional use versus a rezone. I just, I don't, I think it's, I don't feel comfortable with that, I guess. I'm not gonna stomp around or anything, but I just, I, I don't, I, I think it should be done with a rezone.
What language do we have in our ordinances that makes rezoning a good, good solution for that? I mean, why did you pick that? And under what part of the ordinances did you choose to do it this way?
So this is the language of 15-2-5E, roughly page 6 of the zoning ordinance. That particular way was, I guess, chosen because that's how the city has done things in the past. That came down from above me.
And you said, Patrick, that this has already been replatted into one parcel?
Correct. That has happened already.
Correct.
And so, under Mike's approach, the way to probably do it would be to rezone them both the same and then replat? Under Mike's approach, that's what you're...
Probably. I, I just think that it could be a way where someone could rezone something, and then just, if, just because they buy something next to it, to be able to, 'cause with a, a rezone, does that have to go to City Council as well? Or do we, right?
A rezone would.
A rezone would, but a conditional use would not.
Would not.
So, it's just, it's a rezone, but you're doing it with one last step, and I just, I don't know. I, I don't know that, I would think that's the way it should be done. But that's, if, if others don't agree with me, that's fine. That's, I don't think it should be done that way. That's why I made the motion.
Okay, on the other hand, can somebody appeal the conditional use?
Yes.
If they don't agree with it? If planning zoning passes a conditional use, and somebody doesn't agree with it, they can appeal, so there is a process.
But you're thinking of down the road on other property? You're trying to look ahead, right?
Right, I just, I think that the proper way to do that would be through a rezone. And if we do it here, and then we tell someone else that they can't do it that way, I don't like that either, so...
This section was most recently used down at Twin Rivers Crossing, just in Oakland. That's property that had two different zones. So it was R1 and R2. The R1 was extended over the R2, I think. This was a while back, so it has been used in private circumstances as well.
Going from a heavier density to a lower density would be a little bit easier to swallow too versus going, and institutional's certainly not a heavy density or anything, but... That's, that's my, my thought process on it, I guess. And the reason, uh, rezone couldn't be done directly is you can't rezone, I suppose, part of a plat, is that...
Correct. It would, the order of operations would change, just because you, most of it is institutional, you would be rezoning institutional to institutional now that it's part of the plat. And, and Mike's argument, the order of operations was screwed up. But right now, we have a lot with two different zones.
It would be weird to try to rezone just a portion of a plat, of a plat, of the whole thing.
Correct. We'd probably need a meat and bone description.
How did it, I guess, just going for our operation here, how did it get replatted when it wasn't the same zone?
Planning looks at the size of the lot, not necessarily the zone. If it's, if it's platted into a functional lot that meets the minimum size and frontage requirement, it could be replatted. I imagine there's some engineering too that Tammy looks at, but that is beyond me. For a zoning standpoint, we look at the minimum lot size and the frontage to make sure that it is usable for something if they replat.
But then you end up with a plat that has two zones.
Correct.
I don't think it happens very often, though.
It usually happens in situations where, say, someone buys a, a big piece of property, they, they have some, you know, concept or preliminary plan in their head, how it's gonna lay out. They install, they wanna install a street, you know, 'cause they lay it out where the street's gonna be. There's something wrong with the property, so they can't quite lay the street that way, so it changes, and now you have a property that has multiple zones, because the street alignment changed.
And it seems like, other than the fact that we ended up here with a plat that has two zones, I mean, we relatively commonly probably see, yeah, properties platted and then later come in for rezone change, which I guess we're not technically talking about, 'cause we're talking about this, uh, conditional use provision, but it seems like that part in itself isn't unusual, just the existence of the two zones is... Unusual.
So we've had a motion to deny that lapse for lack of a second. Is there a motion to, on the other side, to accept the conditional use? You guys said you were gonna be easy on me. Here we go again, I mean, it's like, God. My Robert's Rules of Order aren't that strong.
Uh, Noam, I would make a motion to approve the conditional use.
I'll second, Teal.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, to approve the conditional use on the land next to City Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. I don't think we need a roll call on that one. Okay. Yeah. But very good comments, Mike, so I, I appreciate your thinking ahead on that. Okay, number, uh, number nine is the conditional use on Aspen?
Correct. So there's this little bit down in the southeast part of what was, was next to the Brandon Golf Course. This, these little pieces were, land was added in, replatted, so we are in the same boat that we work for City Hall. So those were residential, golf course was institutional, so now you have a, the golf course original as institutional with little pieces of R1 in the corner. So a lot with two zones, again. So, this is Country Club. Yep, so, so this is Country Club. There are the two lots on the southeast part of Aspen is down here, Country Club's there, it's the two residential lots. So it's just a sliver of property that was here.
So, Patrick, they're already being used by the golf course?
They have been combined with the golf course, correct. And I don't, I don't know why, if I had to guess, it would probably be drainage, 'cause that's usually why we acquire property.
Go ahead, you come on up.
Curiosity.
Okay, could you state your name again, please?
Larry Hedrick, 401 South Country Club. The driving range is just, just below my lot, so, uh, when I received the letter, I said, "I got a letter, but I don't know why I need to even show up."
Yep.
If I can get information now, then if you don't decide, or whatever, I don't have to show up.
We've got, I've gotten quite a few phone calls on this, just because I did have to send... So, our code requires we send out a notice to anyone within 300 feet of a property.
Right.
So as you can imagine, given the size of the golf course, there are quite a few houses within 300 feet of the golf course.
Right.
So every one of those people would've got one where, if you live way over here, it probably doesn't impact you a whole lot, but, so the city, we either bought or swapped property with 411 South Country Club and 415 South Country Club, so a little bit of property was added to the golf course. And those were originally, those are residential properties, so they are R1 zoning.
So how does that, how does, how does being institutional versus residential, what, what difference would that make?
Golf course is not a use in residential.
So, so all it does is it, it keeps those pieces of property from ever being, having a chicken coop or something down there?
It allows the golf course to be golf course.
Yeah, okay, and prohibits its use for any other reason.
Whatever's in it, it's usually city use is institutional.
Or schools or church, non-pro, nonprofits.
Usually, I wish you wouldn't say usually. That scares me, so...
Uh, we've, we've been doing this with all of our parks, and we've had a lot of questions about it. Reason we're doing it is we're out of compliance, and we're just trying to get things cleaned up, yep.
Right, thank you, thank you.
But appreciate your coming, yeah. Yeah, always come if you have a question, that's what we're here for. That, those letters do work, Patrick.
So...
All right, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have some more discussion on this one? This one doesn't bother you? Okay, all right, then let's have you make the motion. Oh, okay, well, somebody else make the motion, then.
Bassett will motion to approve.
Noam, second.
All right. Now we've got a motion, a second, on the conditional use on East Aspen Boulevard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, public hearing on, and they're leaving this fascinating conversation? Um, public hearing on zoning ordinance?
So, while back, we talked about a developer that was proposing a, a large townhouse development. Currently, our code in R3 allows multifamily, 36 or more, as a conditional use, but there's no similar language for single-family attached. We talked about this, and this is kinda what we came up with. Single-family attached, 36 or more, would be added as a conditional use, but if you look throughout the regulations... We've, we've addressed multifamily for things, but not so much single-family. For an example, single-family attached in the sign standards could not have a freestanding sign for the development, but a multifamily could. So that's why things like that are written in there, that we would treat them like multifamily dwellings for the purposes of the standard. So that's kinda what we came up with. You all scheduled it for a public hearing. The developer is eager to get going in the fall. So I think when we talked about it, we... We, we, we all kind of agreed that this is something we wanted to potentially allow by conditional use permit. The mechanism just wasn't there. The whole language dealing with multifamily had to have common corridors and entrances and, versus a townhouse that wouldn't.
So this would clean that up?
It would allow the developer to proceed with building their development.
Is this what you guys were looking for? I, I vaguely remember the discussion, okay.
Yeah, I think same, same is what's been said, but I think my statement for is, I don't think we, in my opinion, I don't think we intended to exclude this from the zoning.
As these things come up, yeah, you try to, you don't, you can't anticipate everything. Are there any changes that anybody sees? Patrick does a really nice job on getting these things put together.
And in this case, this would be a recommendation to the City Council, or?
Correct. And this would tentatively be scheduled for a City Council public hearing on the 17th. With or without changes?
Uh, this is Noam, I would, uh, make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council.
Shonem in second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, on changes to the zoning ordinance. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll put it on the agenda for City Council then?
Yep.
Okay, then we have the building permits listed, and then we're going to 11A, which is discussion about if we want to reschedule the July 4th meeting, or just not have it at this point?
As far as I know, there's currently no, nothing like a public hearing scheduled for that time. There's one scheduled for the following meeting, but as far as I'm aware, nothing scheduled for the first Thursday of July.
I'm guessing some people may be traveling that week, too? I know Patrick said he wasn't gonna be able to be here.
I'll be out.
So what, what would you like to do?
I'm in favor of canceling it unless something, uh, important comes in that needs to be taken care of. In which case, I would, I would vote for Wednesday, the day before, the 3rd. But if the, you know, things, there's nothing on the agenda anyway, I'd say just cancel it.
That's, I would definitely say Wednesday, not Friday.
Yeah.
That probably would be a Friday.
Do we need a motion on that, then?
Probably, if you're rescheduling a meeting.
Or canceling it?
Yeah.
Somebody wanna do that?
What would be the deadline for something, if something came in, that would be scheduled for that meeting?
I don't know that we can do that. I think we either cancel it, or we don't.
It would have to be published in the newspaper on the 19th, so we would need it in the office on the 14th. So next Friday is, would be the deadline for something to come in.
I would, I'll, I, I move that we cancel the July 4th planning zoning meeting. I would, I'll, I, I move that we cancel the July 4th planning zoning meeting for 2024. Just in case we're listening to this.
Did you want your alternative to be part of your motion?
No.
Tote second.
Motion and a second to cancel the July 4th meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so now you always have to remind me how to do this. So now we adjourn?
Correct, you adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission and reconvene.
And we reconvene as the Board of Adjustment?
Correct.
Um, roll call, everyone is still present as they were at the beginning of the commission meeting. Um, so we would need approval of the agenda for the Board of Adjustment.
Totes move to approve.
Vassal, I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so now we're dealing with the variance application that we talked about at the last meeting, correct, Patrick?
Correct, the applicant is here. This is the property in the Berkman Industrial Park. I'll zoom out and try to find it. So based on my understanding of the, the application, they are seeking to, rather than have the front yard setback be 25 feet, by the definition of what the front yard is, it is everything in front of the principal building. So technically, right now, the front yard is this whole piece. The front yard's required setback is 25 feet and that extends the, the width of the property. This is a interesting situation with the long drive that connects back to the lot. It's, it has frontage, just different than most square lots would have. They are seeking a variance to have to, instead of 25 feet back here, they would like it to be 10 feet from the.
You wanna come up and just kind of tell us what's going on and give us your rationale?
Uh, Corey Coonert with 924 East Redwood Boulevard stays in storage. Um, sorry, I was gone the last meeting, we just had a baby, so, um, but yeah. What we're trying to do is, you know, we have that driveway, so we're kind of landlocked. So we would like for that to just be our frontage and then be 10 foot off our, our south end, so we can put up another building.
And would your intent with the new building to be all access kind of from the middle of the lot? You wouldn't have access on the outside?
Correct, yes.
It would be so tight there.
So the backside, we would leave enough for drainage and we'd all tile it all out and then, um, have the whole middle for parking and inside the units itself.
Would you go 15 instead of 10?
We'll take whatever we can get.
I'd be more comfortable at 15 myself, just. My, I understand where you're coming from and I, I appreciate it. My kind of looking at the, what's the negative of it? If, there's other properties that are landlocked, especially in that development. And if we say okay to this, you know, because of your situation, what are we saying okay to? And that's kind of my concern. And if we go, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to go less than 15 either, but whatever we go to, we're kind of saying that in this type of situation, if we're, if we're calling this hardship, what are we saying okay to? And that's, that's my, my concern is who are we saying okay to other than you guys? And if we go too far, then all of a sudden you have a lot that we don't even think about. All of a sudden, they can do things that we're, so that's, that's kind of our concern here. It's not just you guys, it's what other things are we looking at? So, um, I do understand you don't have a typical frontage, so you don't gain a lot of the things that a typical street would have.
Yep.
Um, we kind of talked about a lot of these things at the last meeting and, um, but that's, that's my concern when I'm looking at this is just, it's not just you guys, it's other, other properties like this. What are we, what are we okaying, I guess?
Yeah, we're not trying to pick on you. So there's a form that has to be filled out on these variances and one of the items is, is what is the hardship? So the commission has to be comfortable with naming a hardship. It can't just be, uh, financial, it has to be something unusual tied to the property itself. Am I correct, guys, ladies? So I guess the, in your discussions, is it the shape of the lot? What's the hardship?
I think, yeah, the irregular shape of the lot and the fact that by the nature of that little peninsula of land that goes out to the public street, they're being asked to comply with a front yard along the whole face of the property, where they don't have the benefit of having that ease of access to the main public street. I also think it's, so the surrounding properties are other industrial and then is that anytime fitness in that building, is some of that general business or?
Yep, and there is residential, it's technically across the road from residential, given the driveway.
And I believe the gentleman that came from the, from the group that owns that building, he said 10 feet, didn't he? Oh, he was leaning 15? Okay. Okay, okay, okay.
What's the current front setback on the, they're in industrial, right? Light industrial?
Heavy industrial, 25 feet, 25 feet. So there are other properties, they're flagpole properties around town. This is a residential property, but it would have the same driveway to the property. So there are other examples in town.
So to Mike's point, if, if we allowed the variance, other properties could come in? To apply for it?
And I think another unique thing is that fact that there's not nearby, there is, but indirectly adjacent, there isn't residential property too. I think that's another unique aspect of this lot. And just to state it clearly, in my opinion, if it was, then I wouldn't be in favor of considering a variance if it was abutting directly next to a residential property. So just wanted to say that aloud.
Abutting or adjoining?
I know, I said the bad word.
Inside joke, inside joke. Yeah, we've, uh, we've taken a fairly hard stance on variances because, as Mike mentioned, it, it doesn't just impact you guys, it impacts other properties. And if we say yes to you, and then how do we justify saying yes, no to somebody else? So that's why we always have to study them.
Gotcha. What are the setbacks on the east, north and west? Five or 10?
They're 10s, all of them are 10s.
Okay, so I guess that we, we looked at the 10 mark too and was like, well, if we're 10 foot off to the, to the east, you know, we're not any different if we went on the south.
A little bit of. I just don't want water being dumped onto that front lot. And with 15, you have an easier chance at making a swell, swell in there for dirt to get, stay it on your property and not drop to the south. Because you're gonna have gutters on there, they're gonna come out minimum three foot. So you're, just call it five foot left you got to work with, with your water. And that's not much, to me, it's not.
Yeah, we planned to, to tile it all, because all the water drains to the, to the northeast. Um, but yeah, we, we, our plan is to tile it all and, and shape it all to the northeast, because that's where it all goes currently. Nothing actually comes back.
I know, but I'm just trying to protect that property to the south because you can move that building up, you could push it up higher and create water to go wherever you want. You can. And I don't want to get in a situation where you do that and then all of a sudden you go, oh shoot, there's water going there, how do we stop it now? And they have the problem. And what are we gonna do when they come in and go, why did you allow this? Because I know that water in that area doesn't move very well.
No.
I know that.
The, the property exactly to the north of his did exactly what you just said.
It drains a hundred percent.
He's two foot high and he, he forced it right to his property.
And Rob, you're comfortable if we had 15 feet, then there would be more flexibility.
I just think you have more of a flexibility to create a swell, to keep it on your, to keep it on your property and let it naturally get out to somebody. It's gonna go to somebody else's eventually, but it's at least a lot less, especially with like the other day, we had an inch and a half of rain in 20 minutes or half an hour. It dumped and there was water everywhere. But, I mean, it goes away eventually, but it's the fact that when it comes, it's there. The other thing, going to a 10 foot, then all of a sudden you have 10 feet all the way around. That's, we're kind of saying that all that area is usable and granted, the difference between 10 and 15 isn't that much, but it, it gives a little bit more green space in an area where there isn't very much anyway. So take for example, another site that maybe is vacant, that's similar shaped, and all of a sudden they put up a, one building that's on all the setbacks. So that's kind of part of the setback too, is to kind of limit how much use you have on the land. So even though you're gonna have two separate buildings, we're kind of saying how much of the land you can use. So the difference between 10 foot and 15 foot isn't that much, but it is a little bit. So that's kind of. I, with that, I, I would say that due to the subject's location setback off of the street creates a hardship and they don't have the benefit of a, a true frontage. So I would, I would make a motion to approve the variance with a 15 foot setback on the south side.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the variance with the 15 foot setback. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got it, got you a little bit.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming. And how's that, how's that baby doing?
He's good, he's healthy, momma's healthy, so.
What's his name?
Aiden John.
Congratulations.
Uh, nine pounds, 12 ounces, 21 and a half inches long.
Is that your first one?
First one. So we're hoping, we're hoping D1, so no, we don't have to pay for college. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nine twelve, glad I'm not that momma. Okay, okay, all right. Whew, all right, all right, um, anything else for the good of the cause?
Nothing really for the agenda, but just wanted to point out that I think we, how many single-family permits did we have last year? 20-ish? So at the end of May, we're at 19. We've already had some this month, so we have exceeded last year's single-family home permits.
So we need a motion to adjourn or do you need a motion to adjourn or we're just done?
Yes.
Yes, okay, motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustment. The whole thing, Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning. Got a second?
Tote second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good work.
We are adjourned at 7:13 PM.